Welcome to April 20th, 2015 City Council Meeting. We're coming out of closed session. Is there anything to report out of closed session?
No actions to report this evening.
Thank you. Ms. Scott, can you please take a role?
Councilmember Hawley?
Here.
Councilmember Enscore?
Here.
Councilmember Murray?
Here.
Pro Temenia?
Here.
Mayor Gasno?
Here. And Mr. Enscore will lead us today in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. All right. We have an acknowledgement tonight, our first thing on the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Hawley, people who actually see us here. And we are going to acknowledge that April is Child Abuse Prevention Month. And I have an acknowledgement here for someone from the Child Abuse Prevention Council that's going to accept. So you can go ahead and come up there and I'll read this to everybody and let you have it. City of Crescent City Acknowledgement Supporting April 2015 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas, the City of Crescent City recognizes that every moment of a child's life is an opportunity to learn, and the quality of these experiences may determine whether a child succeeds in school and in life, and that all children need caring and loving adults in their lives. And whereas, the City of Crescent City acknowledges that their children are our greatest resource and our future will be determined by their innovative talents, ideas, and leadership. And whereas, the role of our community members is to accept the responsibility of ensuring that every child experiences an environment at home, in preschool, in family childcare homes, in our neighborhoods, and at school that will promote the best possible development. And whereas, our community has the responsibility of offering parents the education, support, and skills needed to provide healthy, safe, and nutrientate homes for their children. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Crescent City hereby proclaims the month of April 2015 as Child Abuse Prevention Month and urges the community to support the efforts of the Del Norte Child Abuse Prevention Council, First Five Del Norte, Del Norte Child Care Council, Del Norte County Juvenile Court, CASA of Del Norte, Del Norte County Health and Human Services, the Del Norte County Unified School District, the County of Del Norte, Licensed Foster Care Homes, public and private agencies, and programs advocating for children in Crescent City and parents who already provide a safe, loving, and nutrientate environment to their children, free of any outside intervention. So, thank you. And here's this acknowledgement for you.
So on behalf of the CAPSIC Council, I wanted to say thank you very much for proclaiming April as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. And to let you all know that in the month of April, we've had several activities, and those activities are still continuing. On April 1st, we have the Children's Memorial Flag Raising, and you can see those flags flying throughout the community. I believe there's over 20 flags flying this year. We just hosted on Saturday the 15th Annual Youth and Family Fair, where over 1,200 children and families attended that event. On April 29th, the CAPSIC is also hosting a Child Abuse Prevention Roundtable. And then tomorrow night, hopefully you received your invitations, we are going to be showing the documentary, The Raising of America, which focuses on child advocacy. So on behalf of the CAPSIC Council, we thank you.
All right, and we thank you. Okay. Next on our agenda is the Consent Calendar. Number two, approval of the regular meeting minutes from April 6, 2015 council meeting. Receive and file the Warden Claims List for the period of March 28, 2015 through April 2015, April 10, 2015. Receive and file the biweekly payroll report for the periods ending April 4, 2015, paid on April 10, 2015. Receive and file monthly budget to actual financial report of the city's major operating funds for the month of March 2015. Approve and authorize the city manager to sign a project closeout agreement for the Second Street Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project with the Mercer-Feizer Corporation and file the notice of completion. Seven, consider and approve Resolution Number 2015-16, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City approving legal services agreement for city attorney and appointing a city attorney and deputy city attorneys. And eight, authorize the city manager to sign a three-year agreement with Mission Linen in the estimated total amount of $20,000 for municipal laundry service. Is there any public comment on the consent calendar? Seeing no public comment on the consent calendar, we'll bring it back to the council.
Mayor Gasno, I move for approval of the consent calendar items two through nine, two through eight.
Thank you.
I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Enscore?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Pro Temenia?
Yes.
Mayor Gasno?
Yes. And that is approved unanimously. Okay. We're on to reports and presentations. Number nine, Fire Department Training Burn Presentation. Mr. Palazzo?
Yeah, Mayor Gasno, members of council, Chief, Fire Chief Steve Wakefield, and Community Development Director Eric Taylor will do this presentation.
Thank you. Chief, Mr. Taylor.
Hi.
So Chief, how many things have we burned down lately?
We burned three houses in the last six weeks.
Three houses in six weeks. Intentional, intentional. That's what we like to do.
So, kind of in our ongoing code enforcement efforts, we had two recent cases that we were finally able to close out, and some of them took quite a while to get there, but we finally achieved our objective. First one being 750 C Street. See, I think I got, so that's a condition of the property. This is a residential structure, wasn't really worth rehabbing. So, of course, in these cases, we work with the property owners, we try to make it financially feasible for them if they decide not to repair their properties, to demolish them. And of course, it's a lot cheaper to haul away a pile of rubble that's burnt than it is to actually demo the whole house and haul it off. Saves quite a bit of money. And the other end of it is, we get some great live fire training exercises for the fire department. And again, it's kind of unique, I think, to our jurisdiction, I mean, maybe some others as well, but that we're actually able to do these types of fire training burns. A lot of larger cities and locations don't have these opportunities. And again, this is the property. And so, I'll turn it over to Steve at this point, because we have the two, then we'll go back over to the A Street one. Do you want to sit here?
She says this will work. So this is just a group of firefighters assembling at the C Street burn. Each, for the two nights that we burned these two structures in the city, we had a little over 40 firefighters in attendance doing the training. The training varied from some ICS, an on-scene command sort of training, to interior structural fire attack, roof venting, engineering, large hose handling.
So ICS is?
Incident Command System.
Thank you.
Here, we're doing some vent training. Actually, that's a pretty new firefighter there that is cutting a roof for the first time and being supported by fellow firefighters there. This is, it looks like right at the beginning, we're getting ready to make entry into this house, and they start small fires in various rooms, one at a time, and then the firefighters will divide up into teams and go in and actually put the fire out, then back out, then we assemble another team, light another fire, and go back in again.
Chief, are those black turnouts, are those the new ones?
Uh, well, they were new when we bought them in 2009.
So what are the other ones, the other color? Are those older?
The ones are back.
The yellow ones are older?
No, that's not bad.
One more. Or is it different departments? The ones in the yellow?
Uh, actually, it's hard to say. Right now, the members of the fire departments that belong to the district are usually in yellow, but we, the city, still has some yellow gear.
Eventually, it's all going to be the same, though, right?
Eventually, yeah. We actually have a committee that's working now through the new organization to come up with a spec that's called for the gear, and everybody else has the same.
They'll all be uniform.
I mean, we aren't going to go out and buy, you know, 50 sets of new gear, but as we replace it, we'll buy the new spec.
If I can chime in a little bit, Chief, you know, it's real important to note, to the council and the community, that this is a volunteer fire department, and it's Crescent Cr-
Crescent City Fire and Rescue. It's a new name.
Crescent City Fire and Rescue is a new name, and it's a, you know, a combination of the city and the district firefighters that, you know, Steve, you know, is overseeing and managing. But, you know, when the community sees, you know, these number of firefighters, you know, this is all volunteer. It's good training for them. You know, they put a lot of time and dedication into it, but it's really important to have them have the hands-on experience with these training burns.
Yep. Yeah, we don't get enough structure fires to ever get everybody trained very well. So having these training burns where we can set up scenarios really helps a lot. This is just a shot of people, this is the city's aerial apparatus here that we're using to protect the structures next door. People watching. And that is when that fire took off. You can see it's pretty well involved. We've spread out around the building now, and we're manning hose lines and trying to keep the adjoining properties cool as we can, anyway. And at this point, there is no firemen or firefighters inside that building at all, obviously. And that's kind of what's left about 10 o'clock that night, so it continues to burn down.
So about how long do you guys stay on scene?
Uh, that night, the last person left about midnight. And then we usually contact the police department, and they patrol it a little bit in case a wind comes up or something happens. We try and leave it burn a little bit if it's not bothering anybody, because it just gets cleaner. I mean, that much less to pick up and clean up, so. So now it's to you.
So the second property was 746 A Street. Most of you are probably familiar with this property, it's probably one of the worst residential properties we had. This one took a little while to get completed. Fortunately, we had a deceased property owner, so it took a while to track down the errors and then go through the process with them and get to that point. But in the end, they were cooperative and decided this was the best solution for them as well. And I also like to add, like Steve said, we also, you know, we do these in cooperation with the police department, you know, they help out with being on scene for traffic control and just, like I said, for patrolling the area, and as well as Public Works Department, who also provide a backhoe, which is actually a very useful tool a lot of times for pushing these piles up, making sure the fires don't spread. But again, here's a 746 A Street property prior to the burn. This was a really bad property for a long time. We had a lot of transients living in here, a lot of drug use, driving a lot of neighbors crazy for quite a while. Actually, I commented to Steve, because they went and cleared all the brush before they burned it, I think it's the first time they'd mowed in about two years, so. And that gives you kind of an idea of the accumulation of trash and other debris that happens at these locations. Again, it's kind of that kind of broken window theory, right? You get kind of rundown property and more and more crime happens, just tend to attract crime. And that was kind of the inside. And this property, actually, you can see the walls are missing. I think all the way down that hallway, the entire floor was gone. Again, it's another property, it just didn't really make sense to rehabilitate it. And again, I'll turn it back over to Steve.
Did you burn with the furniture and whatnot inside?
Some of it. Some of it we cleaned out, but what we could. Sometimes, and we did it on this fire too, we even set up an arson scenario, and then had, we have a couple people that had just came back from Emmitsburg, Maryland, from arson training, and they then figured out how we lit the fire for us, you know, and things like that. So we leave some stuff in there. Here, we're having the, this is kind of the safety briefing, which is kind of part of that whole ICS, Incident Command System stuff that we talked about. And before the fire, we go over things like where there's holes, if, you know, if there's any hazards that they should be aware of, those kinds of things, trying to edge our bet. This is, this was a really good structure for this. This is a bunch of fairly new firefighters. They're actually inside that trailer watching that fire develop. We've got one fire battalion chief that's inside, kind of going through the dynamics of fire, the growth of the fire, what's going to happen, and they stayed in there and watched it build and build to a certain point, and they'd cool it down. And then all those guys came out. But for probably six or seven of them, that was the first time they were ever inside a building with live fire, and that's quite a unique experience. And it's one that oftentimes either makes or breaks a firefighter. I mean, they decide on the spot, this is not for me, or it is for me, and depending on the firefighter as to whether they continue on or not. This one, it's burning pretty well here now. Got the training out of the way. More shots. You see that, Mr. Weir, over there? These are pictures my wife took, and she's big at the family thing, so. This is a shot of them getting ready to actually make entry, go in and put out some of the fire. And this one slide we put in there, these two ladies in the front in the green vests are the CERT Fire Rehab Team, and I think most of you are familiar with CERT, the Community Emergency Response Team, that is trained, probably somewhere close to 400 people in our community now in emergency response. Well, there's a group of them of about 15 or so that are part of the Fire Rehab. And anytime we have a significant event, we can call them, and they'll come and take care of things like just getting water to us, or providing food, doing medical checks, like if we have a big fire, we might want to take people's blood pressure to determine whether they should still be fighting fire or not, or take vital signs. And anyway, we've got quite a dynamic group of people that really enjoy coming out, and they do it for the training burns, but they've also done it several times on real fires. And they enjoy it, and we really enjoy it. You know, at first, it was a lot of these old fire guys are saying, oh, these people, what are they doing? I can get my own bottle of water. And now, they love them, so. It's worked out well for us. They really provide a great service to us. That's the City Engine 10. For those of you that remember when that was donated to the city by the Andy Flynn Estate, that engine came to us in 1999. It's hard to believe it's been that long, but, and it's still a great engine. More of the fire, and that's it. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions? No? Thank you very much. Chief, Mr. Taylor?
One thing I just want to add real quick, too, is amazing, especially on that A Street property, you consider how close that structure was to the adjoining structures. And you can see in the background there, the kind of blankets they put over the structures to protect them, and we didn't have any collateral damage, so, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Item number 10, Water Conservation Update. Mr. Palazzo?
I'd like to have Public Works Director Eric Weir present this item. Our discussions before the council meeting, there's a lot of moving parts with this topic in the state, and what we tell you tonight may change tomorrow night or by next meeting. So we just kind of want to, you know, throw that caveat out there with, we'll tell you what we know today.
Thank you, Mr. Palazzo, Mayor Gasno, members of the council. Yeah, water conservation. We find ourselves in a fairly unique scenario in regard to California cities and what California is dealing with, and the fact that the drought that Southern California is facing right now isn't really the same experience that we're having. And the Smith River watershed is actually in a decent shape, and we've had, you know, good rainfall this year, and in fact, we've done some analysis on some of the drier years that the Smith and our watershed has had. And we really don't see the low-flow impacts that you might see from, say, another water source, like a lake or another surface water source where you see Shasta and it gets really low. The Smith River seems to have an underwater aquifer that is pretty drought resistant. So we are in a, we are in a good situation, although a lot of these, the conservation efforts that are going to come before you tonight, or that will be updated on, are still just best management practices. Like Gene said, we are dealing with a very fluid situation in regard to the water regs, no pun intended. The water regs, actually, the state on Saturday came out with some revisions. So this is, it's very dynamic at this time. So we'll just kind of run through what we know. There isn't any action that's going to be required of the council tonight. This is just an informational update, and we will be back before the council in the upcoming meetings to request some action. So, where we were. So July 15th of last year, the State Water Resources Control Board approved the emergency regulation to increase water conservation. We took this item before the council on August 4th, and the Resolution 2014-31 was adopted, which implemented Stage Two of our Water Shortage Contingency Plan. So this is the, this is the plan that limited outdoor irrigation. That's what they mandated by the first stage of water conservation. So for us, it was limited outdoor irrigation, where you couldn't irrigate between the hours, I believe, of 10:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. And that was, among other things, that we'll kind of go over that are still in place. On March 17th, as the rainfall wasn't what it has normally been throughout the state, and the drought was definitely continuing, March 17th of this year, the State Water Resources Control Board adopted extending emergency regulations to increase water conservation efforts even further. So that's what we knew a couple of weeks ago. So within that, they mandated that all Californians now, so instead of just going back to your Water Shortage Contingency Plan with restricting what your outdoor irrigation limits were, they said all Californians shall not allow water to run off of any lawns or landscapes or gardens onto hardscape, basically wasting any water with irrigation. You can't wash your sidewalks, driveways, or hard surfaces. You have to equip all hoses with shut-off nozzles. That includes when you're washing a car to make sure it has a shut-off nozzle on it. You have to ensure that all water features are equipped with a recycling system, so you can't just waste water going through the fountain, it has to have a pump on it. You have to promptly repair all leaks, and now they're requiring, even though this is what we required last time because of our Shortage Contingency Plan, they're requiring that all restaurants now have to provide notice on each table of the water emergency and refrain from serving drinking water unless it's requested. And then all hotels, motels shall provide in each room a notice of the water emergency. New this year is they're requiring that no one shall irrigate outdoors during a storm or within 48 hours of measurable rainfall. So that's new this year, and that was part of the board adopted action on March 17th. What it means for Crescent City customers, so that's all Californians, what it means for us, we're a large urban water supplier, meaning that we serve over 3,000 connections. So we must impose the restrictions on outdoor irrigation, we must notify customers about leaks that they might have that are within their control, and then we have to increase our reporting on our monthly water use, and then report our compliance on enforcement. So to accomplish this, and again, a lot of this is still changing right now, but we're working on updating our Water Shortage Contingency Plan anyway, to make sure that it applies to our system in regard to the methodology to determine, you know, the drought vulnerability for us. Within this, it was going to limit the number of days of irrigation once we have decided that we are actually in a drought, and then also it has a section on revenue impact assessment. So this is going to be part of the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan. Anyway, you needed to update your Water Shortage Contingency Plans, we're just going to be ahead of the game. So to comply with the new requirements, we're going to go ahead and bring forth before the council this updated Water Shortage Contingency Plan. Also, what we were going to do is bring an amended water code to the council, and what this would have is it would incorporate the Water Shortage Contingency Plan, which currently it's not. And by doing so, then as you revise the Water Shortage Contingency Plan, it would automatically be revised, because the Water Shortage Contingency Plan is mentioned by reference in the code. So then any changes we made to the contingency plan would also be made to the water code, and we wouldn't have to amend that. So that was the plan. On April 1st, the governor came out with his executive order, and it basically, he said that all California cities and water agencies must reduce their water production by 25% system-wide. And that included not only residential, but also commercial, industrial, and institutional, as well as you had to do some sort of revenue assessment on your system, because as we know, water revenue is based on water consumption. If you reduce consumption, you reduce revenues. And so that is a real concern for us as we're going into this. If we're looking at reducing, you know, our water consumption throughout the customer base, then we are going to have to keep an eye on our revenues and see how that is going to impact us. That is something that we are going to be doing some analysis on and taking a look at. So as far as the state goes, they're going to try to ramp up their enforcement as well. That's part of the governor's order. So they have said that they're going to do informal enforcement, which is written notices, and this is going to be to communities that are really just not doing anything about conservation and not paying attention to the goals. Furthermore, they went on to say that they could issue cease and desist orders if we don't comply or if the communities don't comply, and that could be followed by administrative citations. So that was all as of late last week. And then on Saturday, they came out with revised proposed regulations that's set to go before the State Water Board in early May. The set proposed regulations do away with some of the watering restrictions that they had talked about. They talked about imposing two days a week as far as a restriction for irrigation, so you couldn't irrigate more than two days a week. It looks like that's going to be removed. There's a lot of things that they're looking at. They're looking at, instead of just saying 25% across the board, they're looking at tiering what sort of goals you have for restriction based upon your water use now, with the thought being that if you have a system where you have high per capita use, that you can actually save more water versus if your system that has low per capita use already, then your requirement would be less. So overall, across the state, we'd still receive a 25%, but for each individual community, it's going to be slightly different. But that's kind of where we stand at this point. Again, it's very fluid. There's a lot of comments coming up and down the state in regard to this. The state is listening to some of those comments, and they're coming out with these revised regulations. So hopefully, that provided at least an update. More importantly, though, we will be back before the council in the upcoming meetings and give you hopefully a more solid report on what the actual regulations are, and then what actions that we're recommending for the city.
All right. Any counsel questions?
I do have a question. You know, I understand that this is very fluid, and I've been following this in the state, and there are cities that are wanting to get special permission not to follow it. In Crescent City, our sole water source is the Smith River, which is fine. We don't rely on other state runoffs like Shasta and things, and so what do you think about a separate notice or letter to the Quality Control Board, so they know that we don't take water that's meant for Los Angeles or Sacramento? And why do we need to comply? We're not in a severe drought. I understand it would be hard probably to do, that they don't want to start making exceptions, but they're already doing that. They're already starting to make exceptions. And what do you think about that? Is it worth the try, or is it worth to? I mean, we're a sole water source.
You know, obviously, we are in a different situation than what Southern California is with our water source. They have included some provisions in their new proposed regulation to look at cities that maybe aren't in the same scenario as Southern California. What they have based it on right now is, they say if you are a community that doesn't buy water or import water, which would be the situation that we're in, and you have average rainfall for 2014, then you can reduce your reduction down to 4%. Well, we're still below average rainfall at this point, so, you know, we wouldn't be in that scenario. Certainly, I know of some humble counties and cities that have submitted letters in regard to their particular situation and how they differ from Southern California, so certainly, counsel's prerogative on that one.
Mr. Hawley?
Actually, I was going to talk along the same lines. It occurs to me, and I think I said this last year, that if we don't use the water, it goes down into the ocean, and now we have the rising of the ocean. So we're contributing to another ecological problem, and we're trying to solve one that we don't need to solve. So I'd be in favor of doing some kind of a letter so that we can get it. There's really no point in our not irrigating our lawns. We have a difficult enough time with the appearance of our city, and we don't have a water shortage, so why in the world would we want to stop irrigation? I don't know. It just, I know it makes them feel better, but it doesn't make any real sense to us.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Well, we haven't had our normal average rainfall, and this is an issue that's throughout the state. And I read an article last night. I think it's- I think it's VOX, V as in victory news. I don't know if anyone's heard of it. But they had a lot of references, a varied amount of references from different sources. So I think it was a pretty good article. It wasn't just an opinion piece on how complex our water issue really is, and the contributing drought issue, because we have, we have federal regulations, and we have state regulations, and then we have different sources of water that contribute to Southern California, which takes 80% of their water from different areas, like the Colorado River. And the Central Valley takes water from different sources. So it's a lot more complex issue than anyone can really appreciate, both natural and environmentally and politically. So I think that we need to kind of look at that before we would consider asking for extenuating circumstances. So I just, just so we know, I mean, we, to look on the surface of things, we aren't in a drought situation up here, but, and I don't know what the solution is for us, but I just think that we, it's incumbent on every citizen to work and educate themselves as best they can, but it really opened my eyes about how complex of a situation it is. It's a political and an environmental quagmire, really. So I, you know, I just think that maybe we ought to look at it a little more closely before we start shooting off letters.
You know, it is. There are some best management practices that, that I think that it'd be hard to argue with, you know, example of, you know, having shut-off nozzles on a hose when you wash your car. The 25% reduction, though, goal, you know, that's, that's one that possibly could be, you know, discussed by the council. Because, you know, for, for us, a reduction of that amount is going to be substantial, and you could see, you know, the revenue side of things that we're going to need to have to take a look at.
I would just mention, as you guys look at this, and it alludes into what you just mentioned about this revenue side, given the complexity of our own community situation of what we have just been through this previous year at readdressing our revenue stream with, with our water rates and everything else, that's part of the reason I think we do need to look at asking for some kind of exception, at least with the 25%, because I can't imagine that if, if we come back 25%, that we're not going to be in a situation where our revenue is going to fall short of what we need. Are we going to turn around then and say, "Well, now we've got to up our water rates," which we just did, to try to bring to a balance, because we're having to save water that we really don't need to save in our situation, but the state's mandated this? I mean, I'm all for conservation, but I'm not for putting the cost of conservation back on our rate payers simply because we're having to save money, because Southern California doesn't have any water. I mean, they don't, they don't have any water. They get it from everywhere else. Well, we have our water, and I think we really have to think about what this might cost our, our rate payers if, if we, if we don't address that very thing, so.
Exactly. You know, for our system, we still are going to need the same amount of revenue as what was indicated in the rate study.
Yeah.
That, you know, that was, that was performed recently. And so what you're going to get is you're going to get people using less water, but we still need to achieve the same amount of revenue. You know, in our system, we don't purchase the water from somebody else. So just simply saving water, we're not going to save a, you know, a large amount of our, of our operational costs. Most of our costs are operational cost. It's pumps' cost. It's, it's the, just the cost to actually run the system rather than purchasing something. So this is going to be an area that we will have to keep an eye on.
All right. Thank you, Eric. No action. Should we do public comment? All right. Is there anybody who want to do public comment on the governor's executive order about saving 25% water production? Anybody? Seeing no public comment, now close public comment. But great, we're going right into public comment right now. So we're going on to communications. Public comment period. Any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name and city or county residency for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Is there anyone who wishes to do public comment? No? All right. I see that there's no public comment. I will close public comment. And we will come back to item number 11, and we will adjourn to the housing authority. I don't think there's any reason to call roll, because we're still all here. We have no reports or presentations. We now have the public comment period for the Crescent City Housing Authority. If anybody wishes to make any public comment on any housing authority items, let me do it now. Seeing no public comment, I'll close public comment. And we'll look onto the consent calendar, and the consent calendar for the housing authority has three items. Number one, approval of the regular meeting minutes from March 16, 2015. Approval of the special meeting minutes from April 6, 2015. And number three, approval of the warrant claims from March 28, 2015 through April 10, 2015. Is there any public comment on the consent calendar for the housing authority? Nope. All right. See no public comment, close it there, and I'll bring you back to the council.
I'll move for approval of the consent calendar items one, two, and three.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. We have motion and a second. Can you please pull the vote?
Board Member Hawley?
Yes.
Board Member Enscore?
Yes.
Board Member Murray?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nia?
Yes.
Chair Gasco.
Yes. Thank you. Passes unanimously. We have no housing director's report, no public hearings, no continuing business, no new business, so we will adjourn to the next meeting of the housing authority, which will be May 18, 2015. And now we will adjourn to the successor agency to the redevelopment agency. Don't worry about call and roll. Reports, presentations done. We have public comment period for anybody who wishes to make any public comment on the Crescent City successor agency to the redevelopment agency. Anybody? Nope. Okay. We'll close public comment. We'll go to the consent calendar. We have two items. One, excuse me, approval of the regular meeting minutes from March 16, 2015. And two, approval of the warrant claims from March 28, 2015 through April 10, 2015. Any public comment on the consent calendar for the redevelopment agency successor? No. We'll bring that, close it back, and bring it back to the council. May I move to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Can you please pull the vote?
Board Member Hawley?
Yes.
Board Member Enscore?
Yes.
Board Member Murray?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nia?
Yes.
Chair Gasco.
Yes. Thank you. Passes unanimously. We have no executive director's report, no public hearings, no continuing business, no new business, so we will adjourn to the next regular meeting of the Crescent City successor agency to the redevelopment agency, May 18 at 6:00 p.m. And now we are back to the Crescent City agenda. We have no public hearings, but we do have some continuing business. Number 13, waive full reading, read by title only, and adopt ordinance number 784 of the city coun, city, county of the city of Crescent City, adding chapter 17.88, sale of alcoholic beverages to Title 17 zoning of the Crescent City Municipal Code. And I'm sure that's supposed to be of the city of Crescent City. All right. Make sure that that correction is noted. And Mr. Palazzo.
This will be Mr. Taylor presenting this item.
Mr. Taylor.
Hey, well, I'm pretty familiar with this ordinance at this time. Just a little background, this has been presented to public hearings, the planning commission, the commission approved to move this forward, make a recommendation of the city council to adopt the ordinance. Again, it was introduced the first reading at the April 6 city council meeting, and so again, we're back here tonight for the second reading of the ordinance. I'll briefly go through the highlights. I don't think you need me to go through the entire ordinance again. One of the biggest things for the new ordinance, it requires a conditional use permit for the siding of any new alcohol beverage retailers, and the expansion of any existing retailers. Also has other provisions restricting the sale of alcoholic beverages to our commercial There's the finding of the public convenience or necessity, which is also another determination the planning commission will need to make. And then, of course, there's some other standard regulations, such as signage and education for employees, and of course, the window coverage. Those are kind of the main points there, so I'll entertain any questions if there are any at this point.
All right. Counsel, any technical questions from Mr. Taylor? No, he covered very well the last time. Thank you. Is there any public comment? Yes, sir. Please.
Jeff Wolswell from the Tobacco Use Prevention Program, and I just want to thank the city council for not only listening to kids, but taking action to protect kids, and that's by restricting where these type of retailers can be located. And I also want to thank Eric Taylor for all his hard work, and also the planning commission. They, they listened to me for quite a number of meetings, and really, they are some fantastic people. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Nope. Seeing no other public comment, bring this back to the council.
I will move to approve and adopt ordinance number 784 of the city of Crescent City, adding chapter 17.88, the sale of alcoholic beverages, oops, yeah, this is the right one, to Title 17 zoning of the Crescent City Municipal Code.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Can you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Enscore?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Pro Temenia?
Yes.
Mayor Gasco.
Yes, and that passes 5-0. On to number 14, similar, waive full reading, read by title only, and adopt ordinance number 785 of the city council of the city of Crescent City, adding chapter 17.87, sale of tobacco products to Title 17 zoning of the Crescent City Municipal Code. Mr. Taylor.
So again, this is ordinance 785, kind of along the same track as the alcohol beverage sales ordinance, but this is the ordinance for the sale of tobacco products. Again, I'll go over the main points. Similar, it also requires a use permit review for the siding of any new tobacco retailers or expansion of any existing. Again, limits the sale of tobacco products to our commercial zones. Also contains other restrictions in here, such as outdoor advertising, no outdoor advertising displayed tobacco products within 500 feet of any elementary school or playground or parks. Again, there's the window coverage for the advertisement as well. Those are kind of the main points.
All right. Almost the same, but only for tobacco. Any technical questions from the council? Is there any public comment? No? All right. Thank you.
Jeff Wolswell again from the Tobacco Use Prevention Program. Thank you again. And I want to share a story with you, because sometimes I wonder, you know, am I, am I making a difference, and are we making a difference with kids? And I had the pleasure of talking to all the kids at all the schools about the dangers of tobacco, and how tobacco, tobacco and alcohol companies target their ads to kids. And so I did all that, and that was a lot of fun, and I get to interact with a lot of kids. So last week, I'm at Pine Grove picking up my granddaughter, and this little tiny boy comes running up to me, little tiny boy with big glasses, and he comes up and says, "Hey, guess what? My parents stopped smoking." And I said, "Well, tell me about that." And he, he goes, "Well, you came out and you told us how tobacco companies are trying to get kids to smoke, and they have all this advertising, and he said he went home and told his parents they need to stop smoking. And he said both his parents are now wearing the nicotine patch." So I wanted to share that story with you, because I hear those stories a lot, in that I have the pleasure of educating kids who then turn around and educate their parents. So thank you again.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Great story. All right. Is there any other public comment on the tobacco sales? Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring you back to the council. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 785, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Crescent City, adding chapter 17.87, sale of tobacco products to Title 17 zoning of the Crescent City Municipal Code.
I'd second that motion. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Can you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Enscore?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Pro Temenia?
Yes.
Mayor Gasco.
Yes, and that passes unanimously. Thank you. And a smattering of applause. Awesome. Okay, now we're on to new business. Item number 15, receive and file report of cash and investments as of March 31, 2015. Mr. Palazzo.
Mayor, I'd like to have our finance director, Emily Boyd, present this item.
Ms. Boyd, how are you doing tonight?
Very good. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is the first quarterly cash and investments report, and tonight, I thought since it's the first one, I'll walk you through it. Moving forward, we'll probably just put that on the consent calendar, unless there's something special that merits a discussion. So, let's see. There's several good reasons for doing a quarterly cash and investments report, not the least of which is that the council adopted an investment policy in December that said I should do it. So here we go. Okay, at the top of page two, there's a table which shows the various accounts of the city and how much cash is in each account. And I'm just going to run through that and describe them briefly. Petty cash, and that's cash that we use for incidental purchases and change drawers. The only incidental purchases petty cash is at the administrative department at City Hall. We have $300 there. I have to tell you, we use it very rarely. Most of the time, all of our purchases are made via purchase orders and invoices from vendors. So we use petty cash in City Hall very rarely. We have it there if the need arises. The other petty cash funds are actually change drawers, where they're doing sales and they need change. There's one at the pool, there's one at the RV park. Right now, while the RV park is closed, we have that change drawer at City Hall in a safe there. And when they reopen, we'll move it back out there. And then the utility billing department has a change drawer as well. They have a lot of cash transactions, and so they're very active with that. The next bank accounts I'd like to talk about are the ones at US Bank. We have the main, US Bank main account, and that's the account where all of the receipts of the city are deposited into that account, with the exception of the housing authority funding from the federal government. That goes into the housing authorities fund. But all other cash receipts and revenues of the city go into this main account. All of our accounts payable are paid out of that account as well. The payroll account shows a zero balance there. That's because that's what's called a zero balance account. We don't maintain any funds in that account, but we do write our payroll checks, our paychecks and payroll-related liabilities are written out of that account. When those expenditures are presented to the bank, the bank automatically moves the money from the main account to the payroll account to cover them. So it stays as a zero balance all the time. The next account there is a savings account. It's the CDBG program income account. That account is required to be in an interest-bearing account by HCD and CDBG. Now, you know, I'm just going to touch briefly on program income. You really remember last year, we had to do a pool project, because we had to, we had to get rid of all that program income, and we have expended all of that. I think the pool project is, if it's not done already, it's very close to being completed. The $1,143 in that account right now is revenue, that is program income. That's revenue this year that we've received from various payments on loans that are outstanding. I think we talked about program income and the loan payments in a recent council meeting. I don't expect that we'll get more than the $34,999 that we previously talked about, but there'll be a little bit of money sitting in that account. And then the housing authority account that I alluded to a minute ago, those, we get the deposits from the federal government going to that account. Megan writes the checks for the, the housing choice vouchers out of that account. We write the housing authorities accounts payable checks out of our main account, and then a transfer is done from the housing authority account to the main account on a periodic basis to cover whatever. a periodic basis to cover whatever expenditures the main account has advanced. Then we have the Local Agency Investment Fund, LAIF, commonly called LEIF. Oh, I want to back up just for one second to the CDBG program income fund and point out that there is that interest-bearing requirement, but the interest in that account right now is 0.00987 percent. Such a small amount, I don't even know how to talk about it, but anyway, there it is. And the reason I remembered that is that in the LEIF account, I also wanted to let you know what the interest rate there is, and as of February 28, it was 0.266, which is just a wee bit over a quarter of a percent. One thing that I did not include in this report, but I will in future reports, is to let you know how much interest we've actually earned in the LEIF account. So if you'll bear with me, I'm just going to tell you those numbers. The first quarter of this fiscal year, our LEIF interest was $2,732.53. And in the second quarter of this fiscal year, the LEIF interest was $3,322.64. And then in the third quarter of this fiscal year, that would be the quarter that just ended, March 31, our interest was $3,654.56. So although at the beginning of this year, the interest rate in LEIF was right around a quarter of a percent as well, our interest earnings are actually creeping up a little bit as we manage our cash flow. Cash that we don't need now, we're moving into LEIF so that we could get as much interest out of it as we can, even though the rate is fairly low. LEIF is a really good program. I would say probably most every local agency in the state has a LEIF account. It pools the money and it's managed by the state controller. It pools our money in all of our local municipalities so that we can get better, theoretically better investment earnings off of the funds. If you're ever interested in knowing what are they doing, their website is very transparent. You can go on there, you can find out what investments they're invested in, how much money is in the program altogether, and just, there's a myriad of information there. Okay, so, except for that Housing Authority account and that CDBG program income account, the rest of these funds are what we call pooled. And pooling cash is a really common government finance practice. And although we have all the money in the same bank accounts, and we do that because it allows us to have some internal control over cash. Imagine if every one of our 24 funds had its own bank account. You know, that would be pretty scattered and pretty difficult staff-wise to manage, but also just from a time-wise of tracking the deposits and everything else, it would also just leave us open for all kinds of internal control weaknesses. And so that's basically why most cities pool the cash. However, even though that money is in the same bank account together, in our general ledger, it's accounted for separately by funds, so we know how much cash each fund So then on page four, I took a look at how much fund, how much cash each of our major operating funds has. And the general fund has right now roughly 1.5 million, and you'll recall that we have a $1 million reserve policy, and the balance of that cash in there is cash that we'll probably need throughout the year to meet our appropriated budget obligations. Recognize that cash is a balance at a specific point in time, and recognize also that your budget is not level, you're not spending the exact same amount of money each month, nor are you collecting the exact same amount of money each month. So this number's going to go up and down, you know, with operations, and that's why we have a budget, and we know from our budget what we anticipate our cash will be or our fund balance will be at the end of the fiscal year. Those numbers, if you're interested in it, refer back to your monthly budget to actual, and you can see there what we have budgeted and how far we've come in the year as far as revenues and expenditures. On the Housing Authority here, some of you may have noticed that the Housing Authority here says $65,000 in cash, and on page two, in the Housing Authority bank account, it has $104,000. What that is, is that the main account has paid accounts payable or operations costs, specifically March 31, it paid its internal service fund obligation. So there's some cash that the main account has advanced, and the Housing Authority needs to transfer money into the main account, and that was done in April, so it doesn't show up on your March 31 report. Then let's talk for a minute about the RV park. RV park has been closed, and we made a commitment to take the resources of the RV park and devote that to the renovation project. And we also have a loan, or line of credit loan, from the general fund to the RV park because we're going to need more cash than the RV park has. Right now, the RV park is borrowing money from the general fund, and it has no cash of its own at the moment. The water fund is pretty stable these days. I think that it's in a condition where it has sufficient cash to meet its appropriated expenditures. The all others includes CDBG funds, internal service funds, capital improvement funds, all of those other 24 funds, the other 19 funds together. Sewer, I saved that one for last because it's a little more complicated. The sewer fund continues to be in a fiscally indeterminate state. If we look at page five of the report, we can kind of see where the cash has gone so far this fiscal year. As of June 30 of 14, in our audited financials, we had 1.9 million in cash. Now, as of June 30 of 14, we had a debt service payment due on August 1 of 2.1 million. So we were roughly 200,000 short in making that debt service payment. Normally, we would have expected that in the month of July, we would have revenues over expenditures that would have given us that 200,000, and we would have been able to make 2.1 million dollar loan payment on August 1. Of course, we would have had no cash left, but we came to the council, and as you know, we'd been working for the last year and a half or so to modify that loan agreement with the state of California. And we came to the council in July and said, we think that what we should do is make the principal only payment, and the council agreed to that. So we did not pay out on August 1, we did not pay 2.1 million. As it happens, we were successful with our loan modification request to the State Water Resources Control Board, and the partial payment that we did make on August 1 was accepted as full payment for that installment. So, that left us around a million dollars more in the bank than we thought we would have. The second piece here relating to cash in the sewer fund is that we got some grant revenues in in August. Now, part of that grant revenue was reimbursement for expenditures that we had made prior to June 30, and part of that grant revenue was reimbursement for expenditures on the Prop 50 grant that had occurred in many years past. That's the 500, roughly 500,000. So that was cash that's coming back into the bank. And then our net operating results for the first seven months of this year have been approximately 1.7 million. That's roughly 194,000 a month, I think, if I did the math right. So the sewer fund has 3.4 million dollars. Now, the other things to think about, when you think about what cash the sewer fund has, is that we're still, you know, we're still looking at this fund, trying to determine how we can ensure long-term fiscal stability in this fund. We have a graduated principal payment agreement now with the state of California. That means every year, that loan payment's going to go up by 100,000. We also have a 30-year capital improvement plan, which was presented to this council recently. We have to find a way to fund that. And so, we are still addressing the financial, fiscal, health, welfare, future of the sewer fund, and we will be bringing back to you more information on that at another meeting. So that is my report. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from the council?
It's an excellent report, thank you for that. It's very easy to understand.
Yes. Is there any public comment on the investment, cash and investments report? Seeing none, I will close public comment, bring you back to the council, and entertain a motion to receive and file the report.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Can you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Enscore?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
ProTaminia?
Yes.
Mayor Gasno?
Yes, and that is approved unanimously. Okay, so we are done with our agenda items, and we're going on to city council items. Any legislative matters?
Actually, there's one, and it's placed under, as item D, under city manager's report.
So do you want to just go on to the city manager's report?
Or move it up, you can talk about that one, either way.
Let's move it up under legislative matters.
And that is a, can I get to my request from the League of California Cities, and there's a letter in your packet from Sarah Rounds, it's actually an email that talks about this transportation funding and a draft letter to Jim Beal, California State Senate, and just looking for council direction on what you would, you'd like to support this and send in the letter or not.
All right, any council comments?
I think that this would be a good letter for us to send in support. I contacted Sarah and asked her when this was going in for a vote, and so we still have time to send it in. And as you could see by the budget report included in our city manager's recommendation here, or his attachments, that we would benefit from this piece of legislation. And thank you, Gene, for providing all that additional information, I think that was really helpful.
Actually, all this information did come from Sarah.
Yeah, I saw the breakdown of all the cities on the North Coast and everything like that. We get like 157,000 or something like that if it went through.
I would just like to make sure that we are clear, that we actually have information in your packet about two separate bills. So the letter is in regards to SB 321. The email from Sarah Rounds that is directly behind that is in regard to SB 16, not SB 321. So we're talking, the letter is regarding the motor vehicle fuel tax adjustments, it's not about the transportation funding.
Yeah.
So just so that, because we, just for clarification, then beyond that, that letter is the actual senate bill.
Right, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that. I talked to Tamara Layton about this as well, and she and I talked, and then I contacted Sarah again, and she was on the road, and I thought that I had gotten a hold of Gene about that, so in all the confusion, I didn't mention that part, so, but good catch, too.
Yeah, actually, you mentioned that to me earlier, and I completely forgot to mention that, so.
That's okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The sample letters available, the proper sample letter is available on the League website, but that is a good catch.
But we're talking about SB 321 only, correct?
Correct.
We're not talking about the transportation bill at all.
That is correct.
Okay.
All right, so you need some council directive on that?
I have an opposition to sending that letter.
So there's consensus from us?
Consensus?
Yeah.
There is a consensus to send the letter.
And these letters are easy to send, you can just, you can attach your own city letterhead just online, and you don't have to do a hard copy anymore, so, great.
I would just say, having just read the information about SB 16, that I think that there would probably be some more discussion about sending a letter regarding that as opposed to what we're looking at tonight because of the content involved in the transportation bill. But I'm fully in support of the letter for SB 321.
So SB 3, SB 16 is just an advisory letter that you included in the packet?
Yeah, you know, a lot of this came in, kind of as we were putting the packet together, and I think we got, you know, a little confusion.
I agree. Because the. It's good information, very helpful.
It's good information, the request is SB 321. What we should have done is broken that out a little bit in the packet. The, what's the number on the, the email is an informational item at this point. If you want to bring that back, we can, but that was requested.
You know, I'm wondering if SB 16 is going to get modified. I mean, I don't, I think it's fine that they're going to start charging $100 increase for zero emission vehicles, but I have a problem with a 10 cent increase for the excise tax on gasoline and diesel. We pay a fortune in taxes now for gasoline and diesel. I think that that's a major problem for us up here, is to increase gas prices by another 10 cents. A gallon.
Some of these bills get.
Modified.
Modified.
Right.
I was going to say beat up, but they do, they get modified over and over and over again before they actually.
Corrected or amended, right.
And that some of them get pooled. As you know, you've been to legislative meetings for the Redwood Empire Division.
I don't think I'd like to support that right now until we see some modifications.
That's not what we're asking you to do.
You're right, right.
And the League gives us good recommendations, so.
They do, they do.
Okay, so we have consensus on that. Any other legislative matters?
That's all I have.
All right, well now we go to the city manager's report, minus the D section right there.
Minus D, thank you, and sorry for that confusion. The, a couple of items on the city manager's report, our committee assignments and appointments, when we made, you know, those appointments in December, you know, at that time, you know, we didn't have a police chief. Mayor ProTaminia kind of stepped up and said he'd attend the Pelican Bay Committee, since now that we have our police chief on board, we talked about having him assigned to the Pelican Bay Committee, want to bring that back to the, you know, to kind of make that appointment, update our appointment list, and there's also been some changes, I think for some meeting dates and some clarifications on that appointment list that Ms. Scott has updated. So we just wanted to get an updated, refreshed appointment list in front of the city council.
All right. Thank you, Chief, way to step up. Good job. Is there anything we need to do on that? Any actions or?
No actions, just, you know.
Mayor's prerogatives.
Mayor's prerogatives, you're good with that, and then just update appointment list for the council, and we'll get that posted on our website. The third item is when we adopted our meeting dates for this year, we scheduled our budget workshop for a holiday, and we thought we might want to change that date. After we all took a look at that, we're going, how did we do that? So, we thought we'd go with Tuesday, May 26, instead of Monday, May 25, hold it at the wastewater treatment facility, if that's good with the whole council, start at 5:00.
Great.
Mr. Mayor, before we leave this, on our listing of the updated appointment list, we probably want to include the Last Chance Grade Stakeholders Group that I assigned to us last meeting.
Oh, yeah, nice.
Thank you.
Would I railroaded you guys into being on that one?
Yeah, so at least I want credit.
Kimmy, not all those meetings have been scheduled. The congressman's field representative, John Driscoll, is having a little bit of a go, trying to get everybody's schedules in alignment, so as soon as we get that, we can let you know when they are, but.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else in the city manager's report? No? All right, okay, on to reports, concerns, and referrals. Catherine, why don't you go first?
I was busy trying to get the budget meeting in my calendar book. Okay, let's see, we had on April 8, we had the Penn Air Open House out at the airport, and I greatly enjoyed getting to get in the new airplane, they have real leather seats in there, by the way, and it was enjoyable to be standing in line and listening to people from the Oregon border side of the contingency. We had people from Claripit Pistol River standing in line, and they were very ecstatic about the new air. about the new airline, and so, and then I had people behind me from Brookings. We had tons of people from Oregon in the line that I, the group of people that I was with. And there was one little guy that was, when he got off the airplane, that his parents had to drag him, he was crying, he thought he was going to get up and fly. It was, the poor kid. And then we had the Dog Park Meeting, which was extremely well-attended, and so, thank you, Kimmy and Eric Taylor, for doing such a great job at that meeting. And I think that we really launched something here with our buckets for fundraising, by the way, and thank you again to our team. That's a brilliant idea. And to the DART group, who is launching a fundraiser for us. And then I think the Disc Golfers are also doing something.
They'll be doing a fundraiser as well. And I think there's two more meetings scheduled this week on, you know, discussing the RV, excuse me, the RV Park and the Beachfront Park master plan, on where we're at with all that.
And then we have another big announcement about some advertising money. Who wants to make that announcement?
Repeat that last part, I'm sorry.
The big announcement about advertising money, would you like to share that information?
Certainly. The TriPlicate came to us with a gracious offer to provide free advertising for our beachfront park funds and buckets. So that's going to be a huge benefit for getting this program launched.
Yeah, so, anyway, that was exciting then, and so, that was kind of, I think, a result of this reinvigoration of the Dog Park Meeting that we just had, so, great work there. And then we had our usual local transportation scheduled, scheduling meeting on the 8th of April. And then right after that, we had the airport meeting at 1:30 that day. And then Friday, we had the Economic Summit, and that was quite a well-attended event with all kinds of different groups of providers with information, and I greatly enjoyed that. And I think that's mainly it. And then we had another Local Transportation Commission meeting where we awarded the RFP for the Safe Route to Schools to Mrs. Amber Weir. So congratulations to her. And then, as was, I think, mentioned, we have tomorrow, we have the Solid Waste Meeting, but we have the raising of the American, raising of America, I think, was mentioned earlier tonight. That's also tomorrow. And then I just want to mention on Wednesday that we have jeans for justice, so you can all wear jeans on Wednesday legitimately to work, okay? Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Ensco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of things. Also attended the Economic Summit on Friday, and we had a Visitor Bureau meeting this, on Tuesday, and I think Ms. Murray kind of covered most of the rest of the stuff, so, that's all I got.
All right. Mr. Hawley?
Thank you. This will be a repeat in a lot of ways, but I did get to the Penn Air plane tour, but I only stood in line. The line was so long, and it was so well-attended, and they were very surprised by that, too, that I had to get to the Dog Park Meeting. So I went to the Dog Park Meeting thereafter, the Local Transportation Commission meeting that Catherine already mentioned, and then the subsequent meeting just this morning to choose our Safe Routes to School program manager, which we accomplished. Went to the Chamber Economic Summit, and it was really very interesting. I thought, you know, some of the presentations, like the Realtors' presentation, I found was really fascinating. I wasn't aware that there was that much real estate changing hands in our community, so, that was good. Tri-Agency Meeting, and some exciting things happening at Tri-Agency. We can, it was part of the public meeting, so I can announce that some solutions are being found for 400 Front Street, and so we're moving forward with those solutions. I won't go into detail right now, but it looks good. So I appreciate everyone's efforts on that matter. On the 17th, I had a phone interview with Joy Keller Weisman. She's the consultant that's going to be doing the Last Chance Grade Stakeholder Group. So it was interesting to talk to her and what, kind of what she's envisioning for this group, and trying to give my two cents worth as to what might, we might benefit from. So I think it's going to be an active group, and I think it's going to be a group that won't just be talking. I think there will be some real actions coming out of it. That's what I'm hoping for. So, that was a busy couple of weeks, and I think that's my report.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem.
It has been a busy couple of weeks. I also went to the Dog Park Meeting and the two transportation meetings. Also attended Redwood Coast Transit Authority meeting, the Economic Summit, which I really enjoyed this year. I think it's probably been the best in several years. It was very informative. The Tri-Agency Meeting, and also on Saturday, I went to the Youth and Family Fair that they hold every year. That was interesting. And also on Saturday and Sunday, I went to South Beach to see what all the commotion was about of using our ocean with private watercraft and surfboarders. Saw no problem at all. There was no problem there at all. All this discussion this past couple of weeks about this was nothing. After the district attorney ruled where they should be, the group should be, it worked out fine. And so, that was interesting, and there was quite a few people there. Hopefully next year, they'll get permits, and we can have another, another activity in our city and county to bring more people into our community. And that's it for me.
All right. Thank you very much. You know, as you see, we've been around. I was at the Penn Air Open House, and it was very well-attended. I heard somebody came all the way down from Pistol River, Oregon. So they, it is our regional airport, and it's great to see everybody, you know, support it. And I think Penn Air, after that, will start working a little harder to get those flights out of here earlier than September, which we all hope. Dog Park Meeting was great, a lot of good input there. I heard that we had a lot of people volunteer to help out. In fact, I don't mind planting some trees myself, if I can get down there, and I'd love to be helping out on that anytime. I told them I'd also bring my Rotary Club, so, we'll see what's going on there. I think I'll also get the other Rotary Club to come in, too.
Thank you.
Yes. And then I had the Redwood Transit Authority meeting, and other than that, it was, I didn't have as busy a week as you guys did, but I wish, now you guys are talking about the Economic Summit, I wish I was there. If they would have just had it one week earlier, I would have been on spring break, and I had no problem getting there.
One high school teacher was there with their students.
Well, that's right. That was my colleague, my colleagues from the career technical education part, and they did a great demonstration of all the stuff that they're doing there at the high school, so...
Mayor, if I may take a minute to bring, to bring something up for the council so that we will know. I watched the Board of Supervisors meeting last Tuesday, and they're taking up the issue of the words "in God we trust" in the building here, and Chairman Finnegan said that the city passed a resolution, or, I guess, I don't know if the word is resolution, but we passed that in 2011 to put the words "in God we trust." He didn't know why it wasn't in our, this building, and the reason is, is because this isn't our building. It's in our building at the City Hall. And so, he didn't know where it was and why it wasn't here. Now, three of our council members weren't on the council in 2011, but since the county is taking this up again, and considering putting it into this building where we meet, he was wondering what the city will say about that. And I don't have any opposition to those words going in here. They're already at our City Hall, and I was wondering if the rest of the council members have any problems with the words "in God we trust" being put in these chambers if the county wants to do it.
"This isn't our building" is the only thing.
No, but they wanted our input to see if we would object to it.
Mayor? Yeah, that's probably something that, you know, council direction staff could bring back for a discussion as an agendized item.
Okay, that's fine.
Can I add something about the Economic Summit?
Yes, we'll do that. Yes, Catherine?
When the high school students did their presentation about their shelter for the electronic charging stations, I had suggested maybe they contact, because they specified Tesla directly, and so I said, "Well, maybe you could make your proposal to Tesla for the shelter stations." So one of the students reached out to me because they, for some reason, their email was bouncing back to our city manager, Mr. Palazzo, and so they reached out to me, and so I forwarded it to Gene, and you then forwarded it to Tesla. So have you heard anything, or...
I have not, but I believe his name's David Felix from Tesla, said he'd be happy to speak with the students, and he...
And I have already heard back, he has contacted the students, and he is talking, he is talking with them. So they are pretty excited about that.
Yeah, so, I mean, just, so one little, you know, a presentation, not little, but a presentation at the Economic Summit, maybe our students, who knows what could happen with them. I think that's really exciting, and I'm really proud of the students for what an innovative idea that is. I think it's fantastic. It doesn't have to be rain that they're protecting, it could be heat, too, so...
Maybe our mayor can arrange a presentation in front of the council from the students on their discussions.
Sure, I'll look into that.
Okay, great.
I'm sure they would love to come and present.
Let's keep that moving, because I've got my Tesla in order.
Okay. So we do a project where kids buy cars, fake money, and the Tesla S model only goes for 92,000, so, start saving your money.
With your tax credits, it comes way down.
Oh, yeah, it's probably the 90,000, so, okay.
We don't all have to have one, we can just have one for the council.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the council car, right. That'll go over very well with our constituents.
I'll rent your mine.
Okay, being no further items coming before this council, we're going to adjourn the city council meeting here, and we'll reconvene on May 4th, 2015, at 5:00 p.m.